The City of Forest Park, the virtual council work session, May 18th, 2020. We have three items below the line. The first of those is Reggie, I don't know if Reggie's on yet. And then we have Diana with two below the line. Did you have anything to talk to us about those two? Herbie?
Not unless there are questions. Tax incentive review, council appointments is routine. Reappropriations ordinance is just to cover some costs of some resurfacing projects and some other incidental costs in IT and the police department. So unless anybody's got questions.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the three below the line items for the work session? Well, we will wait for Reggie to see if Reggie got any discussion on the work session before we adjourn it. I think I saw Rosalyn come in too.
Yeah, she's off, she's off the camera too.
Hello?
Hey Rosalyn, how are you?
Hello?
We hear you.
Okay, thank you.
We hear you.
Here's Chelsea.
Hello.
It's like watching Hollywood Squares. For those that just joined, you are live right now.
Let's see here. Hey, it's Reggie. How are you, sir?
Hey Chuck, how you doing?
I'm doing good.
Alright.
Okay Reggie, we were waiting for you. You have the one item on the below the line on the work session. If you got anything on that or you're just gonna wait until we get to this, to it in the meeting?
Well, looking over the information, I think, I believe that it most likely is a typo error. But they, on the one where the Barrett paving materials was awarded and then the base bid and then they got the alternate bid number two.
Right.
Bid Sharon Road, but Sharon Road bid is under alternate one.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Just need to correct that typo.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but other than that.
Okay, anybody else got anything else for the work session?
Reggie, was that for the Barrett paving?
The Barrett paving and the, in the statement there for the number one, where it gives the total of the base bid and the alternate, and it should be alternate number one.
Okay.
The JK word is alternate. Yeah. I think we got everybody except Denise.
Sally, it's okay in the actual ordinance, it's just in the cover memo.
Covered up, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's okay. I wanted to check that it's okay in the ordinance.
How's everybody doing?
Okay, if nobody has anything else on the work session, we're going to adjourn the work session and we'll wait a couple of minutes for Denise to join before we open the regular meeting. We will get started with our regular council meeting. I call the regular council meeting number 1355 for order. City Forest Park, May 18th, 2020. Will the clerk please call her out?
Brown?
Here.
Herbie?
Here.
Oat? Johnson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ness?
Here.
Sylvester?
Here.
Need a motion to excuse?
I would move to excuse Councilwoman Holt.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we excuse Councilwoman Holt. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, if you know by the sign of voting, aye.
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 opposed? When, when she comes in, we will note that she is present, if she comes in. We will move next to the minutes. You've got minutes of the last meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I just want to mention that there should be two Chuck. One from the regular meeting on the 16th of March and one from the virtual on April 20th.
That we didn't, we didn't list them out. We just said minutes, four. Hearing none, minutes will stand approved as presented. Item three is presentations. We have none. Item four, communication from the public. Mr. Jones, I don't believe we had any calls or written questions or comments from the public, did we?
No, not with regards to the meeting. There was one question that was posed about the PIPR program. And basically just wanted to know if we were going to have it and how it was going to work. Essentially, we are having it. Started the first week of May. We've already had it on our website. Take a look at it. Our schedule's out there. We've, we're down to one week a month, but we've added a month at the end. So we've added October. We think it'll work out. It worked out pretty well. The next one's coming up first week of June. So, plenty about. That was one question we received.
Thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda would be reports of standing committees. The first of those would be Public Improvement and Facilities. Councilman Sylvester, do you have any report?
I'd just like to report that I met with Dave Bishby on this past Friday. Just to kind of go over some discussion with some of the street projects and get some more clarity in the outline and the definitions of the base bids versus alternate one and alternate two bids. So just want to report in that area.
Okay, any questions for Councilman Sylvester? Sally, do you, are you keeping a list for the, for next Monday's work session? At this point, we, we are probably not going to have a virtual work session next Monday. If we, if and when we have the next one, it would be just like this one prior to the regular meeting, since these meetings are going to be virtual. And when we get to the city manager's report and my mayor's report, we will give you a schedule of the upcoming meetings. The next meeting report is Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Ness.
I have no report at this time.
Okay, if, if anybody has any items while we're going through this, please make sure you get them, get them to Sally. And she will, she's keeping a list. The next committee report is Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
No report on Ways and Means, but I did want to mention a couple of things concerning the environmental awareness program. There is an expectation that we will be rolling out the electric aggregation in the June billing cycle. And we, we are going to be looking at the best time to put out for bids, the gas aggregation. The other things, because the city municipal building is shut down, that doesn't mean that, that activities of the environmental awareness program are shut down. There are still programs going on. If you're interested in finding out, please go to the website at www.forestpark.org/environmental or call 595-LAND. And you can see the, the actual programs that are ongoing and other ones that may have been suspended. That would conclude my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing none, next report will be Community Development Committee, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report at this time.
Weren't you just on TV recently? Councilwoman Moore?
Excuse me?
I said, weren't you just recently on TV, you and Assistant Chief Hill?
That was for our, our produce pop-up and that was our third one that we hosted at Forest Chapel. And so we're very excited with, from our partnership with the Free Store Food Bank and we served over 200 families during that time. Our next one is June 2nd, from 1 to 3. So we encourage families who are in need to come out. And, and it's open to residents or anyone who's in need. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Thank you. Next report, Law Committee, Councilman Brown. Any questions for Mr. Brown? Hearing none, Councilwoman Holt is not with us just yet. So we will go then to, we'll wait for her to go to the next report, Internal Governmental Relations and Communication. That is my committee. I have no report at this time, other than we, we will be doing the court. We will be doing mayor's court and the schedule will be put out for that. Obviously, we got quite a backup. So we're going to be probably having a combination of two courts in one or additional court. I don't know yet. I'm sure when she gets them scheduled, I'll pass that information on to you. That will conclude my committee report. I'll answer any questions if there are any. Okay, next is item number six, the mayor's report. Just briefly here, just a couple of things. On this past Saturday, we, in conjunction with Mr., with former chief Volmer and his wife, you know, we annually put ribbons of the graduates on the fence along Wenton Road. We did that on Saturday morning. There were about eight people who participated in that. It took about 45 minutes or an hour, mainly because it rained and we had to dive, you know, put some of them up during, in between the raindrops. So I want to personally thank those people. I believe this is either the 29th or the 31st year that that has been done. And Mr. Volmer does it every year. And I can tell you, that is a boatload of work. She makes the ribbon for every graduating senior. Their names are on the ribbons and some little saying about them. So again, thanks, thank her for that and thank her for inviting the city to be a part of that program. Also, as Shabon will talk about and maybe John as well, things are beginning to open back up in terms of businesses and so forth. We will see how this goes. Nobody knows how, what's going to happen with it. It depends on where you, where, when you were watching TV and where they were filming from. There have been some incidents, not in Forest Park as yet, I don't believe. But primarily, our, our position is going to be that we are following the lead of the public, of the health department, since they are the agency that is in charge. Just so our public knows, we do not make the rules. We do not set the penalties. They do. Our thing is, we will, if we get complaints and or questions, those will be passed on to the county health department. That will conclude my report. I will answer any questions if there are any. Hearing none, then we will go to item number eight, the city manager's report, Mr. Joe.
Hello, everyone. I wanted to, I'll follow up a little bit on some of the things we talked about earlier with the mayor. The, I want to give you a date on where we stand with the operations of the city as it, as it is right now. Much of this information we've already provided, also provided, it's available on our Facebook page. And we've made a few, a few videos to talk about some of it. We just posted one this, today or yesterday or last week with regards to where we stand with recreation. So basically with the exception of a few individuals, medical reasons are still working from home. The majority of our staff is now back at the office working in the municipal building. However, the municipal building remains closed to the general public. We are in the process of making much needed repairs and improvements to guarantee the health and safety of everyone who enters the facility. We're hopeful that we can complete these improvements quickly and reopen our building to the public soon. We are, if you've been by the building, you'll notice that we are almost finished with the front door improvements. The handicap ADA accessible doors are in. There's some wiring that we have to do. We hope to have those over the next couple, over the next, hopefully by the end of the week, but definitely by next week. The, we're also installing in that, in that upgrade, a, much like you would at the schools, there will be intercom with a, with a video and audio ability there and we'll be able to buzz people in. Essentially, what we have to do is control the number of people in the building. Fire capacity is what, you know, it's a percentage of the fire capacity. So we're going to allow people to come in, but we're going to control the number of people. Control where they go. They'll be allowed to get in the building, allowed to see individuals. But we don't want to, certain places in that building, for instance, the finance department, where they have a history of, the only way they can see people is to allow them back into the back office. And that's not safe for them. It's not safe for our citizens. So we are going to build some, the ability to see individuals there with some countertops and some workstations that would be, make it basically the ability for people to come up, talk about their taxes, talk about their finance, whatever they need to do, without going into the back building, back of the building and walking through the office. The, um, building department, let's talk about the building department. It's open for duty. They're still not doing residential inspections. They are doing residential inspections for buildings that are not occupied. So if you've got new construction, but if you had a HVAC, something put in like that and you're waiting for your final permit, they're holding off doing that right now. A lot of folks don't want us to be in there. So we're working through that. We expect to turn the service back on fairly shortly. But people are still able to operate their, their, their equipment even without the final permit. Community development, again, much of, much of the work that we're doing and we're trying to push out into the, into the public and get people out of the building. We did have one individual inspector who resigned over the last week, or excuse me, over the last month. So we're down to two inspectors, but we're still able to get a lot of the work done. Economic development, we continue to manage the inquiries for Forest Park companies related to the county, state, and federal assistance programs. We have posted much of this information on our website and our Facebook page. We have provided summary information on Responsible Restart Ohio Plan and complete with opening day, specific guidelines for businesses. Details of Responsible Restart Ohio Plan can be found. The link for that is on our website. Essentially, we, we're asking, we're working with businesses if they have any questions. Our community partners are able to answer those questions and hopefully get people back up and running. Again, environmental awareness, as Ms. Herbie said earlier, is up and running. Most of their programs are outside anyway. There's some, they've, they've been, little impact on their changes on their, on their programs. Again, check our website. The biggest impact that we've had recently, again, is finance and tax because it's one big office. What we've done right now, the biggest question, a lot of the questions we've had is when are you going to reopen city hall? And when are you going to reopen the senior center? The senior center, we've continued to be in touch with a lot of the seniors. We've got a group of folks that are made up of the board who are calling, making, making checks on everyone. And, and we've, we're running video and virtual programs with regards to line dancing and so forth. So we're trying to keep our seniors active in order to accommodate the rush because the tax office normally has a rush the first week of April, from April 1st about the April 15th. That's our biggest time of the year. We are, that, that date was moved back to July 15th is the filing date. So we anticipate that rush again to be July 1st to July 15th. In order to accommodate folks, that many people coming to our office, we had thousands of people last year over that time period. We're moving the operations of the tax office over to the senior center. We're moving the entire tax office over there. That way we can spread out and we can see more people. And we're going to try and automate it as much as we can. You'll see some changes. People will come in. We're hoping to get them in and get them out, not, hopefully they won't stay to have their taxes done. We know some people will. So we're going to accommodate that. We're going to be running scanning stations where we scan their documents, ship them off. Our tax people will prepare them. We'll contact them when it's time to come back and get the final, the final paperwork, assuming that they're comfortable with it. They won't necessarily need to sit down with an individual tax preparer, but if they're not, we can make accommodations for that. So through July 15th, we're going to be, since that's the only building we have, we're moving the tax office to there, establishing that, that is the primary place where we will accept payment, accept tax returns and everything. That's where all the processing is going to be, so that we can essentially clear the finance department out and redo the tax office so that we can in the future be able to service the public. That's where we're going to do those improvements and add the offices and the private offices and the, and the counter space, the glass partitions, so that we can see folks in the municipal building into the future. So this should be just a one-time thing. Hopefully it works out well. We're going to have it all set up probably by the first, first, first of June, assuming we can move everything over there. So we're in the process of moving right now. We just received one of our, our partitions that we're using to partition the public in the, in the offices. We reviewed it. Looks pretty good. We'll probably work the rest of them since we like this one. But anyway, if you hear some questions about tax, right now they're still dropping off. We're not seeing individuals. Go ahead and drop them off. We'll do your taxes. We'll call you up, tell you when they're done. That's the best way to do it. I saw a fellow in the parking lot today. He had his, his tax information. He didn't know, but he wanted his taxes done. He put it in the drop box. That tax return will probably be done in two or three days and he'll be getting it all. So the citizens should just go ahead, drop off your, the information you need, which is a W2 and, and your, in the first two pages of your 1040, any W2s that you have, if you have a Schedule E, if you have rental income, Schedule C for business income, things like that, drop that stuff off and our folks will help you with it. If you can't pay your bill, we understand that. We'll work with you. Go ahead and file, get it in. Don't worry about it. We'll work with you with payment plans. And we know that there's a lot of folks that are, that are out of work right now and, and we, we understand that. So we're not here to, to punish anyone or to make any, to make things worse, but get those taxes in, get them filed on time and then we can work with you from that point forward. Don't, just don't file. The, essentially that's our biggest thing right now is the, is the movement to the tax office. If anybody has questions or departments have a lot of information, they're, they're on file as well. And our, for recreation, we have an update on our, in terms of where we're at with the, with the, with the be glad to take a look at that in, at our, at our website. And it's also the video we posted last week, kind of details that information. As of now, we're waiting for Not Whole, Not Whole to give us information. And we expect, we have to have an answer by June 1st. If we don't have that answer, that will probably be the last leg that would get canceled through the summer. Fall soccer is still pending. So basically the summer programs have been canceled up to this point. So any other questions? I'd be glad to answer anything.
Don, I would just add, I believe we are also going to require, when we open the city hall as well as, as the senior center for tax purposes, there will be notices posted. Every citizens entering those facilities will be required to wear masks.
Correct. Yeah. Anybody coming to any of our facilities will be required to wear a mask. We have had various cases of COVID in Forest Park. Not that we're a hotbed or anything, but it is here. And we need to make sure that, that the population, if, you know, if we have a thousand people coming into our building to do their taxes and to drop their taxes off, we are, we are going to take every step possible to protect the public and to protect our employees. So yes, that will be a requirement.
Question, is there any, any thought as to Jazz in the Park, thinking about delaying that or waiting till a date to determine?
We are, we've talked to, we've had a lot of discussions. We've put off making a final decision as long as we can. I can tell the public right now that unofficially, officially, it will be canceled. The, we need to, it would be imprudent of us to, we need to get the talent right now. We need to book them. We need to get them here. And there's almost no way that we could guarantee that we would have a show right now. We're not allowed to with the no large gathering requirements from the state. So we don't want to, you know, if we paid $10,000 or whatever to, to book an act and we would just be losing that money. And most, most of the time it's non-refundable. They might come back next year, but we have a lot of expenses that we have to make coming up like right now. If, if we want to have it and we need to get moving forward. And I don't believe we should commit to that. So as of right now, we are leaning toward canceling the event. And we'll probably, as of June 1st, make a formal announcement.
And I would just add to, to that too, Don. As you said, we've had a lot of conversations about it. And going back and looking over what, what has happened in the past. The vendors, you know, we have to sign contracts with these people. Once the contract is signed, whether the show goes on or not, we still have the responsibility and the obligation to fulfill that, that contract. And as Don said, it wouldn't be prudent of us to sign contracts when at this point, the governor, you know, the, the require, the requirement for numbers is still there. And he's not indicated that that's going to be moved anytime in the immediate future that would allow us to go out and do these contracts and not have to worry about it. And also, that's what's still in place is the social distancing. It would be next to And it would be next to impossible to social distance at an event like, like that. So as Don said, you know, we haven't announced officially, but chances are unless there's some miracle, that's not going to take place.
We've been, we've been kind of waiting till the, the current order runs out on May 29th. So that's kind of our date when we're looking at the next, we're assuming the governor will come out with something that would take effect on May 29th. So that's why we're using June 1st as kind of the date that we're, that we're looking at making final announcements, but we're pretty.
Sorry. Um, so just one, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, you, okay. I think it's delayed. Okay, sorry. Um, so just one last question. I know that Forest Park does a 50% reimbursement for camp fees. So camp is going to look very different for a lot of families this summer. So if a family from Forest Park is doing virtual camps through the Y or other places, or is there, or is it just the Y that they could actually submit that reimbursement? Would that be?
It's about three or four places. There, there's the Y, there's the flex, the up at.
Oh, Waycroft?
No, the, the Health Flex.
Oh, Mercy.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Zoo is one of the places.
Yeah, when, when we started doing that, we made a list of places where the reimbursement would, would be going. As of now, that's still, that, that, those places are still in place. We haven't subtracted any, we haven't added any.
You know that last one, the third one?
There's, there's, there's the zoo, there's a
Parkies?
The, the invite, yeah, the, the county park system has various things. There's there's a, it's handled by an environmental guy, right? And so yes, the question is, they are, they, they did put out, and we did put out a notice talking about summer programs for kids. And this is prior to, there's still, a lot of them still haven't been canceled, but we're kind of sure they're going to be. But virtual, virtual camps, I think, is something that we can look at. And because that may be the only way they, they happen this year.
There's a, a note in the departmental reports. Summer nature camp scholarships to the zoo and great parks have been promoted. I don't know whether that's virtual or actual. But I would suggest, like you said, go to the website or call Wright at 595-LAND.
We, there's, those at the time when I spoke to Wright, those were, the, the, those guys are supposed to be doing real, not virtual.
Yeah.
Real tax.
Yeah, they were going to be real. And I was concerned when, when we put that out, but at the time it had been canceled. And I don't think they.
I know, I think they were, um, most everybody through the camps is following the American Camping Association. And there's a challenge with the, with how many kids you can get in these camps now.
Yeah.
A lot of them are having to do the virtual as well as the in-person because of such reduced numbers that they're, you know, for our, our families to be able to actually access. They'd be, they'd be hard pressed to actually get in there.
We'll, we're definitely going to do that now. If that's, if virtual is the way to go, there, there's no reason why we wouldn't, as long as it's a certified camp and does what it's supposed to do. So I think, I think that's probably where this is going. Most of them will probably be virtual. But no, there's no, as, as of right now, there's no, there's no intent to not have. I think that's, the intent is to allow those. But the ones we have to certify.
Brown had a question.
Uh, yeah, Don, with, with regard to the filing deadline. Has the city come up with any plan to, especially considering with the pandemic? If anyone's experienced any particular financial hardship? Because I know you do have payment plans to the city, tried to do any additional program, maybe a fee cancellation or anything of that, of that nature for, oh, and there's a council member. Just popped in. But has the city, they're doing anything like that?
Yes, we have. We are searching out different programs in terms, in, in going to write them up. But yes, the waiving late fees, waiving penalties. The main thing is, is if you, you got to file on time. And if you, you're waiving certain fees all the way through there. Our main thing is we just want to make sure that people file on time and pay as soon as they can. We don't, the fees a lot of times can be worse than the, than the actual tax.
Oh, oh, I know.
But yes, we are looking at waiving a lot of those fees. If you're because we're not going to be able to do all those taxes. So for instance, you drop your tax return off on whatever day. And with, and we've got a thousand of them stacked up there. It's going to, it might be July 20th or 30th before we can get to it. And just because, but if you filed it on time and now we send you a bill, you're not going to get that late payment penalty. Because, because you didn't know what the amount was. We're going to, we're going to work with people to eliminate as much of it as we can unless they are unless there's some underlying issue with someone that, that would preclude that. But I think, you know, nine times out of 10. We'll, we'll, we'll be waiving most of the fees. Like we can't pay. We'll have a written, we'll have a written. Harlena and I've had this discussion and we'll have a written policy that we're, that talks about exactly what we're willing to do. That way people will understand it. Uh, within the next two weeks.
Uh, one quick follow-up for the mayor also with the mayor's court in regards to social distancing. Because I know sometimes it can really get backed up in the, in council chamber. Does the city have any protocol on if people are going to have to come in for the mayor's court or?
In terms of, like I said, in terms of, of mayor's courts. We don't think that's going to be a problem because instead of having the one section, there will probably be, there will be additional sessions and people will be assigned or called and told which session they should attend.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
There's also discussions about, as they're doing in our Hamilton County Common Police Court, doing temperature checks of everybody that comes in the door.
Right.
We're also going to mandate masks as they do downtown. And Dave Fitz King is looking at putting up Plexiglas or some type of protective area for I said, the judge sits and the tax, tax representative sits. So and then as the mayor said, the sessions, we might, usually we tell everybody be there at six. Now we might spread it out in 15-minute increments, that type of thing. So yeah, all that's being discussed so that we can come to a final plan once we're ready to open up the doors of the municipal building.
Okay. If there are no other questions for the city manager, we'll move to item number eight.
Mayor Johnson? I'm sorry, this is Roslyn. I have a council member, Moore, I have a question regarding masks. If the resident does not have a mask, will the city have extra available? Because we don't want to turn any, especially if they have appointments.
I'm glad you mentioned that. It's, you were not, well, before the meetings though, we were, we were talking about that, the mask. We have asked and there are people who have volunteered, I know, for an example, the Forest Park Women's Club. I know the city manager's spouse and know that several, so other organizations have either have been asked and or have volunteered to make them, to make masks for us. And we do have quite, we do have quite a few masks. It is, it is our intent to make sure that everybody who comes into the building gets a hat, has on a mask, whether, but primarily, like I said, people are going to be told in advance and there's going to be notices posted that you should have, you, you, you're required to have a mask. But to answer your question, yeah, we, we will be providing masks to those folk who do not have them. I, I'm not, I'm not as concerned about requiring people to wear masks as I am. Because I've seen it in other, in other venues. Some people simply refuse to do it. And you know, if they don't want to, you know, if they don't want to wear the mask, then they just can't be admitted.
We, we just ordered, our tax office ordered, it was either a thousand or 3,000 of the disposable masks. Yeah. We, so we've got a sufficient, you know, in anticipation of this surge that we have coming in July. So we should have those in stock and be ready to go. But we've also got the masks, we've got several dozens that, that have been delivered by folks who have been sending them. So we should have everything everybody needs to be able to get into the building, just matter whether they wear it or not.
Okay, any other questions for city manager? There are none, then we'll go to article eight. Item number eight, other reports, first of those, Law Director, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since, over the last two months, I've been answering a lot of COVID-19 issued questions for the various departments. I also have looked at items such as using a K-9 as part of the fire department for search and rescue. And I've looked over contracts that have come in that needed review. And so if any of you have seen any of those items, any of my opinions, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But I, I'm not going to go through all of them because it's been two months. I have a lot of them, but if you do have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for our law director? You know what, John, every, twice a week, we have, you know, I participate in the Zoom meeting for Hamilton County. And once a week, we have a Zoom meeting for mayors of Ohio. And frankly, we probably, as a matter of fact, at the last meeting for mayors of Ohio, it was suggested that we might provide that information to our city attorney or solicitors. Because most of the questions that we mayors have are legal questions that we. And I think one thing people need to understand, this is all due, Brown, there's so many things out there, so many. Uh, this, this thing is going in so many different ways. You know, one of the big issues as always is what is it that the state is responsible for? And when they make their rules and regulations, pass those down. What, what's the responsibility of the individual municipalities? And quite frankly, you know, we're basically just flying by the seat of our pants. We don't know, except as I said before. Our position so far, John tells us to change it is all of the penalties and rules and regulations are made by the state and or in conjunction with the county. We aren't making the rules, we are, you know, so we technically, we aren't enforcing them, we're recording. So, but there are a whole lot of things involved in this. The one thing that you're probably going to see in the news, if you haven't already seen some, John, you probably already seen or heard of some. They're going to be, this is going to be like the new, the new lottery. There have been and are going to be so many lawsuits filed against the state. People are trying to sue municipalities, blaming, you know, if, if we allow, so I think the, the thing is, if, if we allow somebody to do something that is over and above what the state is, is, is suggesting or recommending or ordering. Then we may very possibly be liable, be in a, in a position of being liable. So that, that, all of that's going to be left to you, John, to work out for us.
No problem, no worries.
Any questions for the law director? There are none, next report is clerk of council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I did document Mrs. Holt's arrival. Ordinance number 06-2020 through ordinance 15-2020, as well as resolution numbers 11-2020 through 14-2020 were posted as required. And that concludes our report.
Any questions for clerk of council? Before moving to item number nine, I want to go back up to standing committee reports. Councilwoman Hope, do you have a report for human resources for us?
No, I do not, and I apologize for my late arrival, I couldn't get on. It kept telling me that the numbers that I had were incorrect, but.
Were you here? That's what counts. Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll go to item number nine, unfinished business and general orders, is there a motion? Someone?
I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the second time by title only. Ordinance number 12-2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we suspend the rules and require the reading in full on two separate occasions and read by title only for the second time. Ordinance number 1220, is there any discussion? There are none, the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend.
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness? Sylvester?
Reggie, you're muted.
Uh, yeah. Okay. At this point, I'll say the motion passes and when Reggie gets back, I will hear his vote.
Okay, I don't know how that happened, sorry Chuck.
But you, we're voting on the motion to suspend the rules, so are you, are you voting yea or nay? I'll put you down for yea.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, so the motion passes 7-0. Next item is item A, ordinance number 1220, would the clerk please read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 12-2020, an ordinance amending chapter 156, comprehensive fee schedule of the Code of Ordinances.
Is there a motion, Housewoman Herbie?
Yes, I move adoption of ordinance number 12-2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt ordinance 12-2020, is there any discussion?
Just that this is a housekeeping item that updates the late registration fee on vacant and foreclosed properties. And this is because of the updated vacant and foreclosed property ordinance that we passed on March 16th. So it's bringing it into line with that, and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? There are none, would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 122020?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness? Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance 122020 passes 7-0. Next item on the, I'm sorry. Next item on agenda is a new business, our order 16-2020, this one must be read in full. Would the clerk please read that ordinance in full?
Ordinance number 16-2020, amending annual 2020 appropriation ordinance 15-2020. Whereas the 2020 annual appropriations were adopted by city, by council on December 16, 2019. And whereas the anticipated revenues and expenditures are coming in as anticipated for the general fund and the other funds of the city. And whereas appropriations must be within a, must be within available resources per the Ohio Revised Code. And whereas an amended certificate of resources is being requested from the Hamilton County Budget Commission. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Forest Park. Section 1, that the 2020 annual appropriation ordinance 31-2019, or appropriation ordinances 31-2019, 02-2020, and 15-2020, as hereby amended, making the following additional appropriations and budget modifications for the following funds as follows. That the street funds are hereby amended as follows. Department appropriation, street fund, capital. Department appropriations, street fund, capital improvement, capital outlay. The appropriations change total a hundred and fifty thousand. Department total a hundred and fifty thousand, fund total a hundred and fifty thousand. State highway fund, capital improvements, capital outlay. The appropriations change total fifty three thousand dollars, department total fifty three thousand dollars, fund total fifty three thousand dollars, total street funds two thousand and two hundred and three thousand dollars. Section two, that there be appropriated from the court automation fund as follows. Fund department appropriations. Court automation fund, mayor's court, other, two thousand six hundred dollars. Appropriation total two thousand six hundred dollars. Department total two thousand six hundred dollars. For the fund total, total mayor's court automation fund, two thousand six hundred dollars. Section three. And the director of finance treasurer is hereby authorized to draw warrants on the city treasury for payments from any of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving proper certification and vouchers therefore approved by the board or officer authorized by law to approve the same or, or in ordinance or resolution of council to make expenditures provided that no warrants shall be drawn or paid for salaries or wages except the persons employed by authority of and in accordance with law or ordinance. Provide, provided further that the appropriation for contingencies can only be expended upon approval of a two-thirds vote of council for items of expense constituting a legal obligation against the city and for the purposes other than those covered by other specific appropriations herein made. Section four, the appropriation ordinance shall be enforced and take effect on its passage pursuant to the provisions of section twelve point zero five of the chapter of the municipality of the Forest Park, Ohio.
Okay, is there a motion? Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move adoption of ordinance number sixteen dash twenty twenty.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt, uh, or, uh, ordinance number sixteen dash twenty twenty. Is there any discussion?
Uh, I just want to explain that these expenditures are to cover, uh, resurfacing projects on Sharon Road and Northland. And that's broken down into two components, uh, partly for the, um, the majority for the actual project itself and also part for, um, to properly account for the grant portion. And then the, um, the appropriations in the, um, current, uh, the, uh, court automation fund are for replacement of computers that are still operating on an old, uh, Windows seven, uh, system. And so I would urge adoption of this, uh, ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on order sixteen dash twenty twenty?
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Herbie?
Yes.
Order sixteen twenty twenty passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is a motion to suspend.
I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolution numbers fifteen dash twenty twenty through seventeen dash twenty twenty by title only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolutions number fifteen dash twenty twenty through seventeen dash twenty twenty by title only. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness? Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes seven zero. Item B, resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty. The resolution confirming the appointments to the Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council from the city of Forest Park.
Is there a motion? Councilwoman Herbie?
I move adoption of resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty. Is there a discussion?
Uh, this is just a routine, um, appointment of, uh, by tradition, it has been the economic development director and the council liaison to the, the, uh, economic development commission, which would be, uh, Mr. Brennan, myself. And, uh, there is an anticipation that this meeting would probably take place sometime in June. So I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty?
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Resolution fifteen twenty twenty passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item C, resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty, accepting the bid of buried paving materials for the twenty twenty street surf, resurfacing program.
Is there a motion, Mr. Sylvester?
Yes, I, uh, motion to accept, uh, resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty.
There's a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty. Is there any discussion, Mr. Sylvester?
Yes, this is in regards to the twenty twenty street, uh, resurfacing program. There are five bids, uh, proposals that were received and read, allowed on April the twenty ninth, twenty twenty. Street resurfacing program, and we've got, uh, following details of the, the bidders, the base bid and the alternate one and alternate two and totals. We've got Queen, uh, City black topping for the base bid, ninety one thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. Alternate one cost of forty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. And an alternate two of forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-one cents. Making a total of one thousand, eight hundred and eight hundred and ninety dollars, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Barred paving materials, ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents. An alternate one of forty-one thousand, one hundred dollars and fifty-two cents. Alternate two of fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and nine cents, totaling one hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty cents. Uh, J.K. Mueller, ninety-six thousand, four hundred and one dollars and thirty cents. Alternate one, fifty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents. Alternate two, forty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents. And a total of one hundred and ninety-one thousand, eighty dollars and sixty cents. John R. Jurgensen, ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars, fifty cents. An alternate one of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. An alternate two of forty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, totaling one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents. Rack and Baller, uh, excavation, excavating, one hundred and nine, one hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. With an alternate one of fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and sixty-eight cents. An alternate two of forty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and seventeen cents. Making a total of one hundred and seven one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. The engineering's estimate cost of the base is one hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and ninety cents. An alternate one of Sharon Road, sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty cents. And alternate two of Northern Road, sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Alternate two of Northern Road, sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty cents, and totaling two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, thirty-one dollars and seventy cents. So all of these bidders were received and found to be complete in their proper order. And following a review of the bidders by the staff and, uh, and the chief engineer, staff recommended that the specific portions of the project be awarded to the following two bidders as, uh, both of these, uh, contractors are able to perform the associated work to the city's satisfaction. So, uh, bidder one with buried paving materials in a total of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twelve cents for the base bid and the alternate one for Sharon Road. And, uh, the second bid to, uh, J.K. Mueller in a total of forty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents for the alternate two of, uh, Northern Boulevard. And, uh, and with this, uh, summary given on the project, uh, motion that we accept the resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty?
Ness? Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty. Would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Resolution number seventeen dash twenty twenty, accepting the bid of J.K. Mueller for the twenty twenty street resurfacing program.
Is there a motion, Mr. Sylvester?
Yes, a motion that we accept the resolution, uh, bid for, uh, number seventeen dash twenty twenty.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty. Any discussion, Mr. Sylvester?
Well, as stated in the details that was, uh, outlined by all of the bidders, uh, that was presented, uh, the staff has recommended to, uh, approve of the, uh, the, uh, resolution which would award the alternate two bid to Northern Boulevard to, uh, J.K. Mueller in a total amount of forty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents. And with this, I move that we accept, uh, the resolution number seventeen twenty twenty.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ness?
Chelsea, you're muted.
Councilwoman Ness?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, the resolution seventeen twenty twenty passes seven zero. Next item is item E, a motion. Councilman?
I would move to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, let's be done by the sound of voting aye.
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 Opposed? Uh, before we adjourn, uh, just for future references, as I stated, uh, we probably were pretty certain that there will be no, uh, work session next week. Then, uh, Don, I know we had talked about, uh, the next two meeting dates, I believe, uh, on the first and the eighth, I believe.
Correct. The, uh, we're looking at a, uh, I believe a Ways and Committee meeting, uh, as well as a, um, general work session, um, and then follow that up next week with the council.
Okay. Or, uh, you, Sally will be sending out a notice on the, on the next meetings. Uh, and as I said, until further notice, we will, uh, still be meeting virtually. Uh, Denise, got a question for you quickly here. Uh, are you still working from home or have you, are you back in your office? Do you have, do you know when you might be going back to your office?
We'll be going back allegedly. August.
In August?
Wow.
Okay, well, it seems that at this point, um, we are, we are going to be doing virtual meetings. The only thing we're not certain of at this time because of, uh, the various work schedules of, though, of people who are working, uh, Councilwoman Ness, are you working from home and will you be, uh, continuing that? Or do you have any idea about your work schedule?
I can't go back to work until August, September.
Okay, and Councilwoman Rosalyn? I know you're, uh, what's your, do you, do you have any idea what your school class slash schedule it will be or, uh, in the near future?
Uh, my schedule's fine.
Okay, so again, I can't say that the, that the meetings will be at five-thirty-ish, but if that's possible, that's when they will be unless there are work or in a class conflicts. Uh, we would naturally move that, move those back. So, uh, just, uh, Sally will keep everybody informed. And, and if on your, uh, uh, on your end, if something happens that changes and that won't, those, this time won't work for you, please let Sally know so that we can, uh, uh, try to work around, around that as well. Any other questions or comments for, for the meeting? Anybody got any questions about anything that we need to talk about?
Real quick?
Yes, sir.
The, uh, there will be, for the, just reminding folks, there's a public hearing at seven forty-five. Virtual, but it's also that there will be, I'll be at city hall in case someone decides they want to come in and we'll have social distancing. But, um, we'll, uh, we'll play that by ear, but we are, it is also virtual, so we expect that we'll be open to the public. And that's with regards to the, uh, uh, changes in the zoning ordinance with regards to, uh, the bed and breakfast, uh, situation.
Okay.
And then we'll, obviously, the, the council, the, the ordinance won't take, will be coming forward for probably another couple.
Anything else for the good of the order from anybody?
Did you, uh, uh, did Don, did you say a date? I didn't, he was kind of mumbled.
Tonight.
It's gonna be tonight.
Tonight, okay.
Forty-five, yeah.
Okay.
If you need, I can send you a link.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, uh, anybody who's interested, uh, I guess, a link will be down, I'll send out a link to everybody if you want to listen in on that.
Okay.
So, anything else from anybody else? I would just say, you know, with, uh, I said earlier, with, with us reopening things, you probably got to be getting questions from people along the line of, well, what's the city doing or why is the city doing this or that? Uh, and as I say, you know, our, our thing is, we don't make the rule, we're just basically following them and we're reporting what was, you know, any questions, uh, violations to the county, to the county health department. Uh, and that's the best, that's the best I can tell you right now because we don't know either. If, uh, if there's no further business, uh, to come before the body, is there any other?
It's just, um, could Don just send the link to everybody?
Yeah, I'm gonna send it to everyone. Sally, you've got, you sent me the link, uh, or was it Joanne?
Probably Joanne, but I can look at my email and see what I have.
I've got it right here. I'll just, I'll send it.
Okay. Also, it's on the, it's on the, um, website as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. If there's nothing else, then thank you, everybody. Be safe and meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
All right.